I'm going to call the meeting to order. First, let's have the Fledges of Allegiance, please.
Fledges of Allegiance, to the right, United States of America. To your father, who stands on my nation, under God, and the people, for the unity of justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for everyone in the room attending, for the people who are remote, and anybody on Facebook Live. As this is a committee meeting, even though it was announced that we would take comments, we're not going to have the phone line available this evening. That's just our standard practice, but if you do have a comment or question you'd like to ask, please email the entire board, and we will get that question through the email system. Thank you very much. So, we're here this evening for a presentation from the Hays Design Group on the feasibility study. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Kevin Hayes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those who are with us in person, and thanks for those who are participating virtually. We have a lot of information to go over with you tonight, so we're going to try to move through it in a pretty determined manner. But before we do that, I did want to introduce the people who are here with me. Again, my name is Kevin Hayes. I'm president and principal of the Hays Design Group Architects. To my right, to the board member's left, is Mike Smith, project architect in our office. And then to my left, to your right, is Dr. John DiSanti, our educational consultant. And I think you have met myself and Mike previously, but John has not met you before. He's been working with us through the last several months. But I wanted to give John a chance, before we started, to introduce himself.
Thank you, Kevin. It's a pleasure to be with all of you. Why am I here? What's my role? I'm an educational consultant. For those of you that did not know what I did before, I was superintendent for 29 years of my 38 years in education in three different districts. And during that time, I oversaw over $100 million of construction. New, renovated, expansions, consolidations, closing of neighborhood schools, all of those things. So I do have a vast amount of experience. And my role here with the Hays Design Group is really to ask your administrators, your superintendent, and you, the board, the tough questions, and the right questions, to make certain that the design phase meets the educational programming needs of your students, your staff, and your community, and that they do so in the most cost-effective manner to the taxpayers. And that's my role. And I will ask the tough questions. I've been on the other side, and I was talking to Dr. Walsh here briefly. The ups and downs of construction, closing, consolidation, I've been through all of those meetings, the hours and hours of meeting and planning and dines, and successes and failures. So I know a lot about the business. And I think I can anticipate the type of questions that you, the board, who are the stewards of the taxpayers, are going to be asked. And I would, you know, have the opportunity also to work with Dr. DePurio and Dr. Walsh in helping and supporting them to ask the tough questions to your staff. Because one of the things that happens, ladies and gentlemen, is when we go to your staff, they give us a whole list of needs. And we like to think that a vast majority of those needs are legitimate, but some of them may not be as needed as others. And this is not about a want, this is about a need. So again, I'm here to ask those tough questions. The other thing that I want to say is that we often hear the word equity. You know, what does equity mean? Well, in reality, equity means is that you are offering an allocation of resources, a different allocation of resources, to lift up those who need more to have the same opportunities as everyone else. And that means trying to do everything you can to level the playing field for the have-nots and the disenfranchised. So I'll be asking questions about that, too. And then we're talking about equity of programs. Equity of programs means that every kid has the same opportunity across the board. And we do that by level-loading of class sizes. And we do that by understanding specifically what the curriculum is about. Form over function, function over form. Hays prides itself in meeting your educational programming needs. Now, there will be times when function over, or form over function, will take a place. Let me give you an example. When Hays Design did the West Allegheny School System, it was the 1960s elementary schools. Three buildings that were built in a time when all of the classrooms, with exception of the perimeter, had no windows. So you can imagine, that wasn't the most attractive situation. When we attacked the renovation project, we understood that educationally and psychologically, light helps kids learn better. And so what we did is we designed the building in such a way that we had all types of skylights to let all this light into the interior classrooms. That was a case of form over function that allowed us to deliver function over form. So those are the types of questions we'll be asking, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, John. And so tonight, every board member should have this packet in front of them. Does everybody have this? Okay. And what I'd like to do first is just go over the key goals for tonight's meeting. So the first is, we're going to review the information binder. It's making its way around. And Kim's going to pass it to Vince. Like every board member to see it, and every administrator to see it, if it could just make its way around the room as we go along. That essentially is going to be the repository of the feasibility study. So we have put in there information we've already gone over with the board. Each of you will get a binder at the next meeting. And you can then insert the packet for tonight under Tab 2, which is going to be the February board meeting in the information binder. We're going to review recommendations for creating a 21st century learning facility based on a 21st century educational building program. We're going to review a list of master plan options with the board that we've developed. We're going to review our recommendations for the master plan options we believe are the best for the district. And it's going to be based on criteria we developed along with district administrators, as well as comments from the board in previous meetings. It's a fairly long list of criteria to say which master plan options are the best. And we'll review those with you. Then we also, we're going to do a comparative analysis of the recommended master plan options. That will be a truncated exercise of all the analysis we've done before tonight's meeting. And we'll look at the pros and cons of each of the recommended master plan options and go over them with you so that you understand what they are. And then also, some of the financial consequences as well. And then after all of that, and again, we'll be answering your questions as we go through it, we are going to ask the board if there's some consensus that can begin to emerge from the review of all this information. And we'll see how that progresses near the end of the meeting. The one thing I wanted to do, though, because we have so much information, I actually wanted to provide some headlines that I think will help the board kind of get your head around what we're trying to do tonight. So the one headline I'm going to share with you is, in terms of the information we have, if I had to write a headline for a newspaper article about it, I would put the headline that "The Population of Bethel Park School District Will Stay Relatively Flat In The Next 10 Years." All right? I'll tell you a little bit more about that when we get to it. Another headline that I would suggest, if I was writing an article about tonight, would be that the district's school facilities will need $70 million or more over the next 10 years invested into them to maintain their quality and to create 21st century learning facilities. And if I had put another headline out there to help, it would be that the major investments that are needed can be handled and managed in a financially sustainable way by the district while still allowing the district to proceed in creating educational facilities that meet 21st century learning standards. So with those three headlines, let's jump into what we have to go over with you tonight. Again, I mentioned the information binder. You'll notice that the packet of information-
Can I just ask one?
Yes, please.
If any of the board or people in the room have questions, can we just stop and ask them at that point? Or do you want to wait until the end of the meeting? Or how do you want to answer?
No, you can go ahead and ask them when you have them. And what we'll do at the end of each section, and again, the agenda's in front of you, we'll pause and say, is there any questions if you haven't asked one? So again, with the information binder, the packet of information you received is punched, three-hole punch. So I'm going to ask each board member, hold on to that. We're also going to ask the district administrators to please send- we gave packets of information for the board members who are not present, as well as some of the district administrators who are not present. And that will go in the binders, which again, will bring all of them, one for each board member, one for each administrator, to next month's meeting. The one thing I did want to point out, if you can look in your packet of information- it's the page right after this one. So this is just the cover of the information binder. And the next one, you'll see there's, it's a table of contents for the information binder. Just wanted to point out a few things to the board when you're looking at that. You'll see that, you know, meeting number one was our meeting last month. Tonight's meeting will be, this packet of information will go in Tab 2. We then have tabs for next month's meeting. And right now, we're anticipating that we'll probably need an April meeting as well, because after tonight's meeting, I think there's a whole lot of information that the board and the administrator need to absorb, process, think about. Come back next month, we'll talk about it more. And then I think after that, we'll be able to move forward to finishing the study in April. The other tabs list the other things that will happen. I will point out, because it may be a question in people's mind when you see Tab 6, Logistics and Annual Cost Analysis for Preferred Master Plan. What is that? Simply put, it's a 10-year budget document. And we list what work would be done each year for the next 10 years, how much it's going to cost, what's the impact of that particular year is going to be on the operating budget. So you can plan to implement the master plan in a way that's financially sustainable. Again, we already have them in there. There's a tab for existing site plans and existing floor plans of all your school facilities, K-8 school facilities. And then in the appendix of the information binder is going to be all of the facilities assessment narratives that, again, we shared with you and went over with you in a previous meeting, and then also some photo sheets. So again, as the binder makes its way around, please just look at it. We are going to take that binder back with us. So that's the information binder and the table of contents. Any questions about that?
All of these items aren't in what you emailed to us, right?
That's correct. Yeah, the only thing that you received was this month's information binder packet. So the February meeting, so it'll be Tab 2. Yeah, good question. All right, so what we want to do next is, if you would, again, turn to the next page in the packet of information for tonight. And it's the recommendations to create a 21st century educational building program. And I'm going to pass it back to Dr. DiSanti after mentioning that what we've done is, we've been working on this for about two months with the district administrators, as well as with input from the board. And we're not going to go through a lot of the detail, only because of the time constraints for tonight. But we did want to go over the first portion of the first page of these recommendations in a little more detail. And again, as a background for this, the educational requirements came from, if you recall, we did a survey of all the teaching staff in the district, all school staff, all district administrator staff. We had follow-up meetings with them. We compiled that information, and then we reviewed those in follow-up meetings with people and began to ascertain what are the educational needs for the district. And we were focused on those goals that the board charged us with when we started this feasibility study, which was maintaining the educational excellence in the district, achieving more equity within the student's educational experience, achieving more equal access to services, and also creating master plan options that are financially sustainable. At this point, I wanted to ask Dr. DiSanti if he wanted to share anything more about those at this time.
Yeah, Kevin, at this point, I'm not sure that I want to show any more other than we got the input from your stakeholders, right? We went to your staff, we went to all of your teachers, to your administrators, and we said, you know, what is it that you need moving forward? Not just today, but moving forward to deliver high-quality educational programs and services. That's where this information, we didn't make this up. Again, a caveat that I will give you is that the more that we move forward with this, the more we want to ask tougher questions, because there may be some gaps. For instance, we noticed that what was important here was technology education. All right? But as I read some of the comments, I wasn't certain as to the level of outcomes that were expected at each level K-12. The reason I bring that to your attention is because that is going to drive room space as well as equipment and utilization. So that's something that the administrators and the teachers have to really hone in on. For the most part, you know, you talk about a gymnasium and a cafeteria, these are all needs. But the question is, moving forward, is how are they going to be used? How often are they going to be used? Again, the administrative team, when I did this with my own school districts, I expected them to show me a utilization chart. You know, if I'm going to build an expensive space or renovate an expensive space, then I want to be able to justify to the public that it's going to be used. And you heard Kevin say over and over, this is an investment. And that's what we want to make sure, is that you get your biggest bang for your buck. So that's just some examples.
Thank you. At this point, I want to ask Mike Smith to walk you through some of the informations on the next pages. And again, when you have the time, you can look at the specific educational recommendations we have for the elementary schools, the NAMs, the Armstrong Middle School, and intermediate middle school. But what we want to have you pull out in front of you would be this legal-sized document. It has a yellow line at the top of the page in your packet. And it has existing buildings' capacity chart. That, if you want to pull that out, along with the-
Kevin, can I ask just one question, just on the last topic that we were talking about?
Sure.
For clarification. So, Dr. DiSanti, did you mention that we did a survey of the staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, great.
So at some point, I guess, this is part of the process we talked about, is how we also factor in the community survey. I mean, staff is important. To me, it kind of means the how we do things, but from the community standpoint, it's the what. And at some point, you should probably cross-reference, you know, feedback from the community and the priorities from the what perspective. And then, kind of overlay that with the how, which is coming from the staff, I think. And so I guess, how much of the recommendations that you had in this report are really driven by kind of the recommendations from the staff versus, you know, kind of your own recommendations?
I would answer that by saying that the understanding, the context for understanding the needs came from the teaching staff, as well as the school staff, as well as the district administration staff. We then filtered that through our experience and with our expertise to make the recommendations that are in the report. So again, and then, so again, if you have that existing buildings' capacity chart in front of you, and then also the color graph in front of you, Mike's going to walk us through that at this time.
All right, so as a follow-up from our last meeting, we put together this chart that you can see on the screen and in front of you, which, what this chart shows you is the, you know, it starts off by showing you the class sizes at your K-8 schools, how you're using the buildings today. Then if you go down to the bottom of each one of the columns, under each one of the buildings, you'll see the first bold number there. Like, for example, for Lincoln, there's a bold 270 in the first column. That shows you the, you know, the current population of that school as you're using the buildings today. So a couple of things you can see, if you just kind of look, if you follow that line all the way across through the buildings, you'll start to see, you know, Washington has a similar number of classrooms as Lincoln and Franklin, yet is showing significantly less students in that building. So that's just one quick takeaway, and we can look at that on the-
Can I interrupt you? Because I'm staring at an enrollment chart. So what you're telling me is, other than kindergarten, this is what's in every grade level?
Yes.
Yep.
I was going to hope it was an average, because the current-
The current grade levels on the far right, you have the chart in front of you.
Yeah, I am. But I'm standing here, that's not the numbers I'm seeing on my chart, totals. So even if I took the number of classrooms times 13, and still have more in kindergarten, even if I took that times 6.
So kindergarten is a tricky one to look at first. It's half, we have kindergarten.
Okay, so let's start with Lincoln, first grade, three times, that's 60 students. I have 75 students according to my chart.
Well, I'll have to go back and take a look at the information we received. Yes, you're using the information we received, again, times and wise.
Seventy, we've been 73, 75, 75, 75, 75 students. Yeah. So I would ask, if that's not down, maybe I'll give it a try.
Okay. Sure. All right, so then the other, so then the second step we took with this, the second bold number that you see below, the first bold number, is the capacity of each one of the buildings, if you take a look, if you use the district's preferred class sizes. So you can start to see each building being under capacity using, you know, the numbers that we had in there compared to the district's preferred class sizes, if you could snap your fingers today and just make every, and level-load every building. So if we flip to the next page, just a graphic representation of kind of what we were looking at. The top, just, top, real quickly, just shows us, William Penn is, just stands out. William Penn is smaller than the other buildings. But the bottom chart, the bottom chart really represents what we were going over in the last table. It shows the varying class sizes, which is much harder to kind of pull out and see when you're looking at that chart on the previous page. So you can see the smaller class sizes there, Washington, compared to Franklin. And these are the average sizes across the entire building. So this information, we put it in the packet. It's something we'll refer back to as we look at some of the different options. It's in here as a reference point. We will also be updating that capacity chart based off of whatever option we start to look at later in the discussion.
Now would be a good time to share a little bit of information on demographics. So, you know, our demographer, Dr. Shelby Stuman, is, has been working, continues to work on his demographic study, which is a part of our feasibility study. He's making progress. His arc is to finish it by the end of March. What he was able to share with me, that I can share with the board tonight, is this information that, again, underlines the headline I shared earlier in the meeting. You will not see any significant population increase in your schools in the next 10 years. Currently, you're probably experiencing the trough or the low point of your population. According to the births that you have in the district in the last six years, you will probably see a small increase in the next three or four years. However, it's likely that, again, that's going to level off. And so when we say you won't see a significant increase, the best estimate he has right now, and again, he's going to have to finalize his analysis, but his statistical analysis, is that you could figure that you might, in some of the scenarios he's working on, you might see 200 students in your population increase in 10 years. Again, not very much. That would be, again, over 12 grades, so not significant. So again, that's just a little bit of information on demography to help as we go along. So in terms of building capacity, in terms of some equity issues that you see in, you know, existing average class sizes and the like. Before we go on, is there any questions or comments? Okay. So if you would turn the page, we just wanted to share with you the criteria for evaluating the master plan options. Again, we're not going to drill down into these, go line by line, but you can see there's a category of criteria related to desired educational curriculum. You know, and again, how does the option, the master plan option develop? You know, how well does it allow the educational curriculum to be implemented as desired? Also, you know, to what degree does the option achieve 21st century school status in all of the schools? Another category would be the criteria related to building systems and site. You know, in terms of how well does the master plan option address the deficiencies in existing buildings that would identify in the facilities assessment matrix and in the narratives for the facilities assessment? Again, everything from building shell, roof, windows, exterior walls, exterior doors, mechanical, electrical plumbing, et cetera, et cetera. Also, site criteria. You know, how adequate does the master plan address parking for staff and visitors, drop-off for students, pickup for students, you know, adequate outdoor recess spaces, fields, adequate area for unloading trucks and shipments, et cetera. And then there's the category on the second page of the criteria document that you have, which would be those related to financial considerations. Again, just bluntly, what capital, what will the impact to the capital budget be for the particular option? You know, how will it impact the annual debt service of the district? You know, what will it do to the borrowing capacity of the district? You know, again, how will it impact annual utilities in a building, and other such costs, and other such financial considerations? So using all, we used all of those in looking at each of the options that we will now go through with you. And they then helped certain master plan options emerge as the ones that we're recommending. So if you turn the page and try to keep up with it, keep remembering to move the- you'll see, at the top of the page, it says List of Master Plan Options for Consideration, and it looks like this. If, you know, it has some yellow highlights. And I'm going to ask Mike if he would walk us through these and explain, again, just quickly explain the options. Again, in overall, we tried to throw a wide net to try to identify any and all options. There is no priority in the way we listed them in this list.
Yeah, and again, the yellow ones are the ones we will kind of dive into more detail on the next, on the following pages. So Option 1 was our baseline option. We wanted to start with something that, you know, shows you how your buildings are configured today, without closing any buildings or talking about any closures or anything. So 1A is, 1A, the option was just to keep all the buildings the way they are today and just renovate them to update and upgrade each building. 1B was to change the elementary schools to K-3 buildings. Take 4th grade, move it over to NAMs, and take IMS, make it a 6, 7, 8 building. Option 2 then was looking at closing one elementary school and just renovating the remaining, renovating the remaining four elementary school buildings to upgrade them and provide equity. Option 3A, 3B, and 3C all look at closing two elementary schools. 3A, the K-4 population gets assigned to the other, to all the remaining three elementary schools. Additions get built as needed to support that population. Option 3B, the K-3 population, again, gets assigned to the remaining three elementary schools. NAMs gets expanded to a 4, 5, 6 building, and then IMS stays a 7, 8 building. And Option 3C, you close two of the elementary schools. NAMs changes to a 4, 5. IMS changes to a 6, 7, and 8. And then the remaining elementary schools- IMS changes to a, um, 6, 7 and 8, and then the remaining elementary schools stay, uh, change to a K3 building. Option four looks at, at closing all the elementary schools, constructing a centralized, uh, K4 elementary center, um, keeping NAMs as it is as a 5, 6 building and, um, keeping IMS the way it is, as a 7, 8 building. And we have a, we had, we had a few iterations, a few different sub-options before, which just looked at the location of that K4 center. Um, option five looks at closing all the elementary schools, uh, expanding NAMs into the K, into, to be the K5 center and then moving 6th grade to IMS. Uh, option six, uh, keeps all the, uh, all the elementary schools open, adds additions to house the 5th grades, so changes all the elementary schools to K5 buildings. Closes NAMs and converts IMS into a 6, 7, 8 building. Option seven closes three of the elementary school buildings, renovates one into a K1 building, renovates another into a, uh, 2, 3 building, NAMs changes to 4, grades 4 and 5, IMS becomes 6, 7 and 8. Um, option eight and option nine both deal with closing all the elementary schools. Option eight, um, you close all the elementary schools, you build a centralized K2 primary center, expand NAMs into a 3, 4, 5 building and move 6th grade over to IMS. And then we have some sub-options with eight, again, looking at the different locations of that K2 center. Um, option, option 8A would be at NAMs, B, B is at the prime, is at the, uh, high school intermediate site. Uh, 8C is at the Franklin site and then 8D is just, is renovating and converting the Franklin building into that K2 center with some additions and alterations as needed. So option nine, similar to option eight, really the difference here between the two options is that, um, the centralized elementary center would be K3. You would not need to build additions at NAMs, it would just change to a 4, 5 building and IMS, just as in option eight, would change to a 6, 7 and 8 building. Um, option 10 looks at closing, again, closing all the elementary schools, building a new K3 center, expanding NAMs into a 4, 5, 6 building, keeping IMS the way it is at 7 and 8. And then the last option, option 11 down there, uh, constructing a centralized K3 center, expanding NAMs to include 4th grade and then expanding the high school to include grades 7 and 8 and close IMS.
So that's a lot of information.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, it is a lot of information. And as I was reading through this, I was thinking that, that in terms of 10 years, that a plan would be progressive and that we wouldn't, like, for example, hypothetically, you have to close some elementary schools, but you have to pick where you're gonna start.
Yep.
You know, so say you started in the Armstrong, or no, IMS. Then how long would that take before you then can move anybody there? And then before you can move anybody from that? So, you know what I'm saying? So that it's, they're not incremental like this in my mind, they're actually, it would be a progressive thing. It might lead up to option nine, but it's gonna take one, one year to do all that stuff.
It, it certainly will. And that goes back to what I mentioned earlier when we said the information binder. So what we usually do in the feasibility study process is you identify a master plan. The, the master plan is not you'll do this in one year. The master plan is you will eventually get to this, implementing this whole plan. And so what we then do is if, if, if a preferred master plan can be developed, I mean, can be identified in the consensus of the board, we then look over a six, seven, or even 10-year period, how does that get implemented, step by step? And that, that becomes the logistics and annual cost analysis that we do because you can't afford to do all this in one year and we know that. So it would be done in a way that you can afford it and be done smartly, which again, I think we talked to you before. I mean, the goal of dev- of doing a master plan is to try to develop a sequence of activity so that what you do first, you don't undo in step four of the master plan. So you spend money once, not twice or three times. Um, John, I was gonna say...
Yeah, if you define me, yeah, you're making a good point. You're, you're making a good point. The, you, the important thing here is that you're looking at the entire master plan strategically and you have to have an end in mind. That's important because if you don't have an end in mind, you're going to be all over the place. So you want to say, okay, which one of these plans makes the most sense educationally and financially? Remember, this is a, this isn't a two or three-year investment. This is a 25, 20, 25, 30-year investment. So you start with selecting the best plan, knowing where you want to be, and then we will provide the phase-in of this, based on the amount of construction that needs to be, renovations, closing. We will provide a detailed, strategic, phase-in plan on how this is going to happen over a period of years.
So with, with all the options that are here, how do you know which one will give you the highest quality education? There's a lot to look at here and that's the most important thing to me. The highest quality education. Is there a research that you're looking at, case studies of other schools, elementary centers? Are you looking at achievement, let's say with an elementary center versus a K through 2 school or a K through 3? Comparing all of these, there's, there's so many options, right? But is there data, research, case studies that you're looking at to show which one will provide the highest level of achievement? And not just the highest level of achievement, even the best environment for our children?
Vince, I, I agree with that. I think the, the big concern that I would have in that regard is that these ideas are in flux all the time educationally and that's, I think that's the hard part. You know, I agree with you because over the years that I've been involved with the school district and on the board and on other committees, everybody has a better idea two years later, you know? It keeps, it keeps evolving as you walk forward down the path, right?
The other style.
Obviously, right? Obviously. And I, I guess the other thing is, it's, the, the most important step in the process is picking the direction we're going. Number one, I mean, that, we can figure out the middle and we know where the end is, but we have to decide what path we're gonna go down. You know, you got all these branches, which one are we going down? So that, that's, I think that was part of our discussion leading up to this meeting is where were we going? You know, what, what do we want to see? And that's a good, that, what you just mentioned is a good starting point as to what we need to know.
I just wanna make sure that if people are doing this already, there's elementary centers that are already there, already happening. You know, there are years of data, we compare it to similar cohort, similar demographic of another school compared to another school. It's, I just wanna see data and that'll help me make a good decision. That, that's all.
Very good question and very good perspective. Remember, you're not the first one to ever go through this, okay? This, this has been going on forever. And clearly, you can identify some specifics with regard to this way is, this way has a better likelihood of students achieving in this environment. But you, ultimately, it doesn't matter how we configure these buildings. Student achievement is driven by teacher performance, okay? That's, you, you, the, that's what this is about. You, you, now, you wanna, you wanna create an environment and you wanna cre- create, uh, the opportunity for teachers to be at their best. That's what you're saying, right? And, and for instance, when we look at this, and, and remember, we're, we're all, we're looking at it educationally, but we're also looking at it from a financial perspective, right? We understand, for instance, that the typical middle school philosophy, if your, if your administrative team and your teachers believe in that philosophy, that being that children of a certain age, in this case, it's typically a 6, 7, 8th grade, should be taught so that you are gradually nurturing them away and becoming more independent. That's a philosophy, all right? So if you believe in that philosophy and your staff believes in that philosophy, then that middle school concept of 6, 7, 8, that configuration is, is, is a, is conducive to the things you're talking about. Creating this environment of safety, but also weaning them away over time, okay? You can create a 6, 7, 8 middle school in such a way that it's, each one of those grades can be separate academies. They can be isolated from each other. Because I know some people, oh, you don't want those 6th graders in there with an 8th grader, okay? You can do that in such a way. But by doing, putting that, those, that configuration together, it allows you to not only create that environment, but it also allows you to, to, uh, maximize your staffing with regard to your special, your specials, like your art, your music, your tech ed and, and those type of things. So we believe that when you ask the questions, we can provide the answers. But it's going to be driven by what your administrative team, your superintendent, and, and what they believe is what, is the philosophy that they espouse. Do they, do you believe in a middle school concept? In other words, if you look at, just, just pick one here. If you look at number three, for instance, okay? Number three has a, a configuration where you're closing two schools, but it's keeping the primary kids together pretty much, right? And you're, you're, you're going, and you're, now you're having K4, but you're also, uh, you're also, um, I'm sorry, K3, but you're also now, and it's creating a, what is now a middle school into an intermediate school. Again, this is developmentally appropriate because teachers will tell you that those primary years, you're teaching kids the basic skills of literacy primarily and numerics so that they can read. And now you're starting to wean them off and you move them now from an, from a primary to a, an intermediate. And then the next step, the middle school, the adolescence. So, so the, the, there is, we believe we can justify these, these, to answer your question. And the other thing that Haze has done is that they didn't throw these things up against the wall. They looked at every specific school, the amount of renovations that would be needed. They looked at the demographics. They looked at the locations with regard to busing, transportation, because you know, if you're going to close schools. And then you look at the efficiencies moving forward. You know, how can we operationalize efficiencies? How can we get the best bang for the buck? So does that start to answer your question a bit?
But is there a way though, let me just kind of replay what I heard you say, okay? It doesn't really matter, okay? That's kind of what it sounded like, it doesn't matter. The options from an academic standpoint, what I kind of heard was it doesn't matter, any of them can work.
That's not, that's not, that's, that's not quite what I said. I said that if, you know, when we go to school, when kids go to school, the, the people that have the most impact on student achievement are the teachers, bar none. The research is conclusive. The second person is the principals, the building principals, okay? But there's a greater likelihood of success and raised student achievement if you create a, a environment that's conducive to good learning, if you group them in such a way that it's developmentally appropriate. Kids change from the ages of 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. They change 10, 11, they change 12, 13, 14, 15. So there's a, when you put them in those groups and you understand those developmental needs, there's a greater likelihood with good teaching that you can make a maximized student achievement.
Okay, so I understand that philosophically, how you just described it, but how does it relate to the different options? Which, which options rise up above the others? Those in yellow because you believe that's a better academic learning environment?
That's one of the criterias. Again, I think we can go back and I don't think it's necessary, but the, the two-page list of criteria, one of those categories was educational curriculum and educational achievement. So that's one criteria. The other is just the, the facilities. How are the facilities? What's it gonna take to renovate them? What, what's going to be the outcome of those? And then the other is the financials. So it's all of those. And, and what I'm, what I'm gonna suggest, because we are gonna go through the pros and cons of the four recommended options, um, I think it'll become a little more clear how they begin to differentiate themselves relative to each other when we go through that a little later on. Sure, go ahead.
There's one other thing that might help vary in Vince in your, in your thinking is that another aspect of this is if you put all students from the same grade in the same building, you can achieve number equality, which is...
Right, oh yeah.
Which is educationally important in terms of classroom sizes. And then the other equality that you have academically is that all the teachers for one grade level are together and can converse and therefore you have a better chance of having a consistent curriculum. So that doesn't completely answer the academic question, but I think that's major if we don't have statistics about the other thing, is that you create an equality, uh, when you put all grade levels together. Or...
It allows you...
Maybe not in one building, but as many as you can get together.
Yeah, we, we, what we would say to that Pam is having all the kids in one grade allows you to equally load the classrooms for those grades every year. Every year.
This...
Go ahead, he can go, go ahead.
This, and, and keep in mind, some of this was covered last month, but I, I, just as a reminder, everybody, you know, this community, um, unlike Mount Lebanon, Mount Lebanon is definitely a neighborhood school community because of the fact there is no transportation. We have to transport in Bethel Park, but we are changing the structure of our schools. But again, we, if the current buildings, and it was stated in, in your information, has, there is cost that will be coming to us, each building, significant amount of money over these next 10 years, from additions...
Yes.
To upgrades. And I, I think people need to hear that more, that we'll be spending money one way or the other.
That is correct.
We're gonna have to. So as we're discussing, how do we best spend that? And, and, and maybe people made that connection already, but sometime, I just, I wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
We've got potentially great expenses in the next 10 years to this district. Yes, we're not just bent on changing this model that, that, that neighborhood school model, because we, we've closed three buildings over some generations for people who've been here for a while enough. It has changed on its own, but along with enrollment is also, the cost is also dictating what direction we need to move.
That's correct.
You know, because reading your, not your, your reports, you know, we're looking at, you know, two gymnasium additions.
Right.
We're looking at all these other upgrades to elementary schools.
Correct. And, and again, all of these are very relevant and, and I'll simply say this. We, we'll cover all of that just in a few more minutes, but I will say for now, do keep in mind your current five elementary schools, there is not equity in those schools. There is not equal access in those schools. There is absolutely not level loading in those schools. So what in developing the options, including the ones in which existing elementary schools are kept, we did push, and in, in the recommended scheme, there are additions to make more equitable facilities. There is looking to redistrict so that there is better level loading. So we're addressing some of those, but, but that's not to say there isn't some advantages of one of the recommended schemes over the others. And, and again, we'll look at the pros and cons.
I, I just don't want anybody that's seeing this for the first time thinking we're just making changes for the sake of making changes.
Right.
We, we know that these things are coming, have to be done and you'll get to your presentation.
Yes.
But it's just, this is why we're looking at it because we have so many things we have to address. Would, again, that, and now it makes sense why we have all these options.
Right.
There are lots, a lot of work here, there's a lot of options here. But again, this is a big situation, you know, and a big...
Right, and, and, and again, and, and just to maybe help the understanding of why the recommended options, let's be clear. Your current IMS has way more space than you're utilizing. The space utilization in that building is terrible. Okay? You currently have a 5th and 6th in NAMs. You have two educational pedagogies, one middle school, one elementary.
How much, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, please.
How much consideration did that take?
But how much consideration did that take into how you're doing this? Because my concern when I see that you want to do a four, five, six building is we, we're going to have three demagogues in there almost. Because, and this is my question, how much was taken into effect that K to five has one set of curriculum that is a whole program that teachers reviewed five years ago and we keep, you know, was bought into? You have a six, seven, and eight model that is totally different than when I went here, six, seven, and eight. And then you have a brand new high school that is a totally different model. So with the high school being out of this, how much did that play into it? As to fifth grade seems to be that spot we don't know where to put. I mean, I'm not being mean, but...
No, no, it's, again, and every school district struggles with it frankly. No school district gets a free pass with it. But in the options we looked at, that had a lot to do with what was recommended.
Yeah, and one comment I'd like to make too. I think, and this is the barriers point a little bit, and I'm, I'm in no way condoning this. But if I said to you money was no option, then the highlighted items on the page would probably be different or could be different.
It could be different, but...
It necessarily has to be, but it could be.
Yes, the simple answer is yes, but it's so outside of the paradigm in which we think that it's pretty hard to stretch because we've never worked for a school district that didn't have financial constraints. And in Western Pennsylvania, there's very, very few that have the luxury of saying, "We just want the best school and go do it."
So from a cost standpoint, I'm surprised that, and we don't need to discuss this because I know we're going to run out of time, but maybe you can, we can talk after the meeting on this. Option four, you know, when I looked through your options, they required quite a bit of upgrades to all of the different elementary buildings. I'm surprised that four didn't come across as a lower cost option by just getting rid of all of them and build a new, you know, K through four center.
It could, probably. Now, so, no, but, no, no, yeah. So a quick snapshot, one of the real black marks against option four is you have five grades in one building. That is really a challenge. It's, it's bigger than the high school. When you think about it in terms of number of students, and those are your youngest kids. That's the biggest mark against that option.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
And that, that's where I was coming back to what Vincent said. The data-drivenness of all of this to do a K to three center and a four or five center or that information, I think for all of us to make that decision, that data, especially in K to five, when you're looking at a board where four of us have kids that are in or very young starting elementary school. So that is a hot topic for a lot of us.
Sure.
That, that is...
And you're, and you're not alone. Elementary kids always get the most attention in any school district.
I know, we built a new thing over there. Well, we did, somebody built a new thing over there.
No, no, I mean, in terms of, in terms of, in terms of emotional, in terms of emotional investment, most parents grade school. Sure.
One of those concerns that I have over, when you, when you have a 10-year plan like this, and this is probably more to Dr. Walsh than the rest of us because we're probably not going to be here 10 years from now in a lot of cases. But, and that's where my point really comes in, is as boards change, we have a plan that we put in place today or whenever, whenever that is. And in, in four years, the board can turn over dramatically. And what happens to that plan? And how do you deal with that? And I, and I know that's your, your ballgame at that point, but it's a concern and it's an issue. And we've seen districts in Western Pennsylvania where that has certainly been a major concern and has caused problems and started and stopped projects, et cetera, et cetera. It's just something I, that we need to be aware of and deal with.
Yeah, two points I want to say to Mr. Mojek is, first of all, he's right. The first thing you have to do is you have to look and say, "Okay, what if we don't do anything? What's it going to cost us?" All right? And is it going to cost us that the buildings are going to be falling apart? And what is it going to, and you can't just look at the buildings themselves. You have to look at your operational cost. It costs more to operate more buildings. You can't utilize your staff to maximum efficiencies when you have more buildings. Okay? And, I'm sorry ma'am, you're, Mrs.?
Turner.
Mrs. Turner, you make some good points. The, don't let the, the great configuration define the program. So if, if Dr. Walsh and his administrative team and your teaching staff says that we want to have these grades in these buildings, you can still have a philosophy, a primary philosophy, an intermediate philosophy, an independent academy per grade. That, that, that can work. You know what I'm saying? The administration has to define, do we want, do we want a middle school concept? Do we want to talk about an intermediate where we're going from perhaps self-contained to team teaching? You know what I'm saying? That, that can be done in any configuration, all right? So don't allow that to maybe say that this wouldn't work because it can. It can work, but really good.
And what else, I'll also share to Mr. Spicuzza's comment is the best plans are ones that you put the time in, you put the effort in, you put the thought in, you do the analysis, you do the due diligence, and you come up with the best plan because it makes the most sense on all the things we're talking about. It's not politically driven or subjectively driven. You, you have the data behind what your buildings need. You have the data behind what your educational program wants to be. You have the understanding what your financial constraints are going to be. So then when the plans develop, you can get a consensus, not just among the existing board, but among the community, so that that hopefully will give you the opportunity of that ship sailing, you know, without looking for another north star. And, and so that's hopefully what we can do. And frankly, with this feasibility study, that it needs to tie into the strategic planning that you're doing as a district right now. And that makes a lot of sense.
So not to belabor it more, but I understand the data behind construction costs, okay? And that sort of thing. But maybe on Vincent's point, and this is where, let's save it for maybe next month's meeting. But I think, you know, I think you do a lot, I wonder why. We haven't seen the data. There's no data. There's no data. And, and so if there was data, it would be easy to see that, yes, this is what we should do. But, you know, you're talking about surveying the staff, what the staff wants to do in Bethel Park. I mean, there are hundreds of districts around the state, thousands across the country. Where's the data that says, "These guys figured it out"? Okay, so what you're, so I'll go back to the question I had. It doesn't really matter, okay? We can, as long as we've got good staff and a good curriculum, we'll make it work. We, and that's where I'm, that's what I'm hearing. Because there is no data that say that, you know, 75% of schools that do things this way can get...
Sure, and we, we can get some of that data for you.
You have a veteran superintendent here, you have a veteran superintendent, and I have a superintendent, say, 29 years. I'm also a national facilitator for the National Center of Educational Economy. I teach principals and superintendents all over the country. It's all cutting-edge research, okay? Cutting-edge research. But there are certain things that you can't specifically define by data. I know that, I know that if you're, if you have an engineering background, people say, you know... What we know is that the highest impact on student performance is, is about effective pedagogy in the classroom, effective practices in the classroom. To Mrs. Dobis' point, we also know that great teaching occurs when it's in a collaborative environment, not in an isolated environment. Hence the need for this collaboration. This is function over form. But I am not, I am not, I'm going to be honest with you. I am not, maybe Dr. Tempurio, maybe Dr. Walsh knows about this body of research that talks about if you do certain grade configurations, you're going to have a better chance of making all those things happen. There's, there's clearly some, there's some work on the primary grades, which is K two, where kids learn, learn to read so that they could read to learn. And there's, and then this, this, this kind of weaning off the independent, you know, independent classroom where they have their own teacher, the self-contained, into a team teaching, and then moving to this adolescence. There's research on that. But I'm not sure that the type of data, quote, unquote, that you are looking for exists. You know, I'm not certain of that.
So the school district went from a K through five system and ended up going with an elementary center. That system won't have data?
Again, if we can, for the moment, just to move on, we will get you some data that support the idea of a K three center. There is definitely data out there.
For me, and by the way, I'm an engineer, that's my background. But, you know, for me, if, 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 if there's no real data to support the benefits of one option over the other, then in my mind, it says, "What cost is the driver?" And then, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, we have a good educational environment, but costs may become the greater factor choosing between these options.
We, we agree with that. And I think the other thing we would say is, let's not diminish what experience also matters. I mean, when you, with the collective experience of your superintendents in this room, you know, there is experiential learning that occurs where you can say, yes. It's, there's going to be challenges putting the entire population of a district, the size of Bethel Park, in a K four center.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense.
And we don't, and you don't need a report to tell you that. The experience tells you that.
No, that makes sense. But again, is it K to three where, how we want to have three to five buildings? We want K to four, or we want to bring fifth grade back into the elementary? Those are things, the data points that we would need to look at.
And again, I think if we can, all good points. It's all relevant. I think some of the other information we have will help fill in some gaps in terms of how we analyzed the options. All right, so we're going to turn the page and I got to move our...
I'll walk Seaverstone.
All right, so at this point, we kind of want to separate the presentation into you're looking at NAMSS and IMS, and then looking at your, essentially your K three population. All right? And I say that because you have two buildings, NAMSS, Neil Armstrong Middle School, and IMS Intermediate Middle School, which are good buildings on good property that have good bones, structure, exterior shell. But you have to recognize the challenge in front of you. And so, and that, they're worth keeping, all right? They're worth keeping as facilities. However, you haven't done a substantial or total renovation at either of those schools in over 30 years. You have done work at each. NAMSS, you know, several years ago, you had, you updated the mechanical system, but you haven't had an overall renovation at either of those schools. So between them, just those two buildings, and they're good buildings. I mean, one's 140,000 square feet, and the other's 200,000 square feet. Relatively speaking, your high school's 300,000 square feet. So together, they're bigger than your high school. They're big buildings. They're good space. We mentioned before IMS isn't being utilized well, but they're good buildings. So they're worth keeping, but they're going to cost you in the next 10 years. Not tomorrow, not right around the corner. They're going to cost you almost $50 million. Just need to kind of take that, understand it. With that recognition, what we did in this, and I'm going to ask Mike to kind of walk us through, is we know that kind of price tag, particularly with regards to what you need to do with your elementaries, you know, is not going to be able to be afforded right away. So we looked at phasing the work in three separate phases. I want to make it clear, this is a high-level phasing. There'll be a lot of work in deciding, well, what's in phase one, what's in phase two? There's a lot of interchangeable parts. What's more important is just get the big picture. And for that, I'm just going to hand it over to Mike. Another reason that we did it this way is because if you looked at, if you went back and looked at those master plan options, the work that we're recommending for IMS and NAMSS is similar in all of them. So we can kind of take that piece, pull it aside, and then on the next couple pages, let's, we can just look at the elementary schools by themselves, knowing that, you know, the work at IMS and NAMSS is similar. So what we have, so again, so we looked at a three-phase approach for those, those two buildings. Phase one, what we did here is we looked at what would have to happen just to basically move sixth grade into IMS, change, and then change NAMSS into a four or five building. So we, in phase one, we don't have any renovation costs or any changes to, to NAMSS just to get it up and running as a different, you know, different grade configuration with two grades in it. IMS, we took the approach of, well, let's put the sixth grade in the first floor classroom area, and let's renovate, let's renovate that area before the kids move in so that they don't have a lot of disruption once they move in. So that's what phase one, that's the, that's the construction cost associated with phase one. It's, let's get, what do we need to do to get the sixth grade into IMS? So it's shown 5.5 million there. And then we took the, we, we had some annual financing costs that were provided to us that we could look for each one of these options. And so, so this one shows an annual financing cost of 350,000 for, for phase one. So then, so then phase two, we were looking at what would have to happen further down the road, five to seven years, to address systems that, you know, that may fail within that timeframe. So, so NAMSS, some of the things you see listed here for NAMSS would be windows and flooring, some telephone systems. The big piece of phase two really is the HVAC system at, at IMS. That's really what's going to make up a bulk of this number, the HVAC system, lighting systems. So that's the, a big chunk there. And again, like Kevin said, some of this stuff, you know, we can slice and dice and move it around once we, you know, kind of get our heads around this a little bit more down the road. But phase two, 22 million annual financing cost of 1.4 million. And then phase three, we started looking at systems that would be failing towards the back end of our 10-year timeframe here. So this is also where at NAMSS, we, we put in the chunk where you, where you would add a secure vestibule, move the administration to the front from a security standpoint, renovate the old administration suite, make some, perform some renovations on the ground floor to the music classrooms to, to make them better suited for, for their needs. And, and then come through, address any code and ADA issues in both of the buildings, at IMS and at NAMSS, and any remaining systems that were on our list that's in the, that was in the longer narratives that we provided you that would need to be addressed by the end of that 10-year timeframe. So, so phase three is shown, as you can see on the page, 24 million with a financing cost of 1.6. This kind of summary there of what we were looking at from a phasing standpoint at the middle schools.
So then, in a separate email, so now we're going to look...
Yeah, now we're going to look at the elementary schools. What we wanted to show you though was a typical narrative. You received a detailed narrative on the work at NAMSS and IMS in a separate document emailed to the board and administrators. You also received a separate document with detailed narratives for each of the recommended elementary school option. And we just wanted to pick one, so we arbitrarily picked option nine. Mike's going to walk you through, just to give you a sense of the level of detail and thought. And if, if we can, just hold off any questions about, we, we just want to tell you that this is the kind of level of due diligence that underpins the summary that we're going to go over, and that's kind of what we want to get to. The summary of the four of them, and I think you'll see information that you compare and contrast, and it'll help the dialogue. But we just wanted to show you, there's a whole lot of thought that's reflected in the narratives that underpin the summaries that we'll go over with you. So Mike, if you want to just briefly walk through that. Yeah, so the top of each one of the narratives just outlines how the grade configurations would change with the option. The next section in the middle there, building capacity projections, we update that chart from the very beginning that we went over, and it shows you how the enrollment and, and population would look like in each one of the buildings under that option. Then we took a look at potential cost savings to, evaluating staffing sizes. And we, we also took a look at other potential cost savings with each option from consolidation of buildings related to...
with each option from consolidation of buildings related to special education or, you know, bus routes, bus drivers. And then we also took a look, you know, what are some potential cost savings for utility and energy savings, maintenance savings. And then we put a, you know, we put a number to, we put a number to that as the, you know, potential conceptual cost savings with each option. And then we took a look at, then we summarized the, the new construction renovation that would have to occur for that option to move forward. And this is again, just related to the elementary school option. And then we put a number, a conceptual cost estimate to, to that. This one's pretty straightforward that you can see on the screen. This one would just, just be for a K three center, because that's the only construction required for option nine. And then we summarize that at the bottom with the financing costs for this elementary school option, and then the, the net annual cost of the district where you subtract the, the, the total conceptual cost savings from the financing costs to give you that number at the bottom.
So then, go ahead. Just one note, we kind of passed over, but it is worth looking at in the detailed analyses. On, on that last page of option nine, you can see renovation savings. So to Mr. Mojacks' point earlier, if you, you know, if you don't have the existing elementaries, you're going to save the money that you would have to put into those. So we kind of list that from option one B would be the cost of renovating and expanding the existing elementaries, which again, is, is about 43 and a half million when you're all told. So renovation costs is typically more expensive than new construction, and because it takes more labor. And so, ju- just as kind of comparative, and again, there's unfortunately no free lunch here, right? There's no option that, okay, we don't have to spend anything and there's going to, not going to be any consequence. So, all right.
So are you saying that the, that the 44, is that a gross cost or a net cost?
That's, that's a gross. So to build, yeah, to build a new, new, yep.
Over a 10-year period, it, it's almost, it's almost the net zero cost of building a new center versus the renovation that you're looking at in the other buildings?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
And again, we'll, it does, it will make more sense in just a moment. So.
When you, sorry, I have a wrong question.
Sure.
When you were offering NAMs for Ben Franklin, I just want to make sure that, we've always had water problems at Ben Franklin. So you, you, you acknowledge that, you know that.
Yes.
So even when you're recommending that we build at Ben Franklin, you understand that we've had water problems?
We do. And, and some of your water problems is rela- current water problems is related to both the location of the existing building and also how the storm water is managed or really not managed at Ben Franklin. So we can deal with water on the site. We, we know how to do that. We, we know how to take water and divert it and, and, and take care of it. And so that's, that's an, that's really becomes an engineering issue, but we're aware of it. Yes.
And then my final question about the two, those two options. And when you're getting the data about educational achievement and so forth, if, if it's better to have two schools on the same property or two schools on two different properties, both educationally and transfer, I mean, transportation, I mean, transportation to one location is, is cheaper than transportation to two locations?
Again, it's a, it's exactly the kind of question that needs to be asked. If you, if it's okay, we're going to answer that when we go through the pros and cons.
Okay.
Because it's listed in there.
I understand it's listed.
No, no, we haven't reviewed it yet. We're, we're getting to it. We're, we're building to that. And then, again, just to reiterate, the net, the net annual cost at the end of each narrative is, you know, the cost of financing minus the cost of potential savings. So in some of the, in some of the options, and this is one of them, you're actually going to have a net savings of a half a million to $750,000. Now, again, the key there is to understand that that net savings is for the elementary option, and then that has to be coupled with the cost for doing IMS and NAMs, which again, we have another, we have another slide. I just give that as a preview to that. All right. And so then what we're, what's also in the, more.
Mike, just one, one question, one request for our next meeting is, it might be interesting to have cash flow comparisons between, you know, for the different options, and for each option, a cash flow comparison between doing that option and doing nothing. And you've kind of got it there. And that was my question on the, you know, the gross versus net expense. But it, it would, I think, help everybody understand what is the real cost if you put this into a side-by-side cash flow comparison, so that you can really kind of see, what's the cost of the initiative? What's the cost of doing nothing?
Sure. And, and we, we might give a partial.
You can't never do nothing, but what is the cost of kind of staying with the status quo?
Sure. And I, and though we, I think we get a part, give you a partial answer a little later on, so bear, bear with us. So just to point out, so in each of the narratives, there is then a, a building capacity analysis enclosed. So we look at what's the consequence to building capacity for each of the recommended options. There is, in, in this case, because it's a new building, if, if you just keep flipping through the package of information for option nine, there, there's actually the recommended educational program for a new building. So it just helps you understand what kind of square footage we had and, and where the cost comes from. In, in, in the options where we have a new building, we actually show you a, a very conceptual site plan for, you know, in this case, a new K three elementary center at Ben Franklin. And, and the one that's up on the screen right now is NAMs. And, and this is the one at Ben Franklin's site. Just again, very conceptual, see how certain things are addressed. And, uh, yep. So, so you can, you can look at those, that, that's in the email that was sent to you. And if, if you have the interest, you could look at each of those in more detail. All right. So now what we want to do is go over the summary of the master plan options for the elementary school buildings. And in each of these, there, there will be a advantage and disadvantage. I think it's, begins to address the issues that the board members have brought up tonight in terms of how you look at this and how do you make a decision if one master plan option is better than the other. And then we do, just quickly summarize the cost implications for that option. So Mike, you want to walk us through each of those?
So option one B, changing all the elementary schools to K three buildings. NAMs changes to four, five. IMS changes to six, seven, and eight. So some of the advantages here, you get to keep that neighborhood, the neighborhood concept as a selling point for the district. Another one being that some of the renovation costs associated with upgrading the buildings to provide more, more spaces to promote equity, you're able to do that within the, within the building a little bit easier because some of that space that the fourth grade occupied before would be able to be repurposed for some of those educational building program recommendations that we talked about earlier. Some of the disadvantages, there, the operating costs and staffing costs would remain the same with no, no significant cost savings to the district with this option. Renovation costs for, for this option would, would still be significant to address 21st century learning recommendations, codes, issues with ages and aging of building systems, those types of things. And then level loading of classrooms at the K three level will still be a challenge without periodic redistricting. So, so, so at the bottom of each one of these options on this page, you see a summary of the costs. Total construct, so summary of financial impact here, total construction cost for this option's 43 and a half million. Annual financing cost, 2.8 million. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there's no potential savings because all your buildings remain open. So then, simple net costs to the operating budget would increase the operating budget by 2.8 million annually. So option three C, which is where you would close two elementary schools. NAMs would change to a four, five building. IMS would change to a six, seven, eight building. Some of the advantages to this option, even the neighborhood concept, again, while slightly smaller, still remains as a, as a selling point to the district. Renovation costs will be slightly less reduced because you have less buildings. And then some, there are some potential savings from a staffing standpoint when you, when you close down two schools and you consolidate. Disadvantages would be that you'd still have significant costs for the renovation and building additions to upgrade those three buildings to 21st century learning recommendations, codes, issues with aging building systems. And then level loading, again, level loading would still be a challenge with three separate elementary school buildings without periodic redistricting. So jumped down to the bottom for the financial impact of this option, 31 and a half million would be the, would be the approximate construction cost. Financing costs with this option would be annually about 2 million. We identified a potential conceptual cost savings of 2,150,000 to 2,300,000 annually for this option. Again, then, when you take a look at the net savings for this one, net costs to the operating budget, this one shows a savings of approximately 150,000 to 300,000. So if we flip the page, take a look at option eight.
Or put them side by side.
Or, yeah, or put them side by side. So option eight is a new, is the new K two primary center, where you, we would be closing the elementary schools. NAMs would change to a three, four, or five building. IMS to a six, seven, eight building. So some of the, the advantages to this option is that all, all the renovation costs associated with upgrading the existing elementary schools, essentially, they're, they're eliminated. The staffing costs for the district could, could be reduced as you would have some, you'd consolidating all your K two, K two buildings into one. The new K two center would better establish equity amongst the students. It would also support ongoing level loading from year to year of each classroom size. And then, and then one last advantage here is that any considerations for a future full-time kindergarten could be designed into the K two center for, you know, potential addition that could be factored into the design much more easily than, than we could plan for that at your existing elementary schools. Disadvantages to option eight, you would lose that neighborhood concept that we talked about earlier with the other two options. One of the, one of the disadvantages to this option is you, you would be required to put a substantial building addition at NAMs to support third grade at that building. And one thing I want to point out here is that NAMs was never really, it was never designed to accommodate adding capacity easily to that building. So it's not, it's going to be an expen- it would be an expensive addition. You'd have some portion of the building that would need to be demolished in order to accommodate those classrooms and a, you know, in the appropriate kind of circulation pattern that you'd want to have in the building. The, the five elementary schools, another disadvantage here is the five elementary schools provided after-hours recreational space, whether it be playfields, gymnasiums, or the multipurpose rooms that, that you would lose by condensed, consolidating down into one building that you'd have to take a look at. And then a new K two center would have a large initial cost, large initial upfront cost. So summary of the financial impact for this option, 47 million for the construction. That does, that includes both the K two center and the addition that you would need to have at NAMs to support third grade moving over to that building. Annual financing costs of 3.1 million. You know, total conceptual cost savings approximately 3,250,000 to 3 and a half million annually. So that would show a net savings of approximately 150,000 to 400,000 annually. So then we jump down to the fin- the, the fourth option here, option nine, where we create a new K three elementary center, close the existing elementary buildings. NAMs stays a two-grade building. It would be a four, five building. IMS changes to a six, seven, eight building. So a lot of these advantages and disadvantages are similar to option eight. Similar advantages when it comes to elimination of renovation costs at the elementary schools. Staffing costs potentially could be reduced similarly to the other options. Similar, sorry, similar to option eight by consolidating down into one building. Again, similar to option eight, the centralized K three center would better provide equity amongst the students, support ongoing level loading of classrooms from year to year. We, we could see this building, an advantage of a K three building is, it sets up nicely for a two pod building where you could have a K two wing, I mean, a K one wing and a two, three wing, and then they could share support spaces in the center, kind of in the center of the building. Again, similar to option eight, you would have a, and we would have a better ability to plan for future full-day kindergarten. And then last advantage that we put down here is that you would not need to construct any other building additions at any, at NAMs or IMS to support the, the new grade configurations. Disadvantages with option nine, losing that neighborhood concept again. Same as option eight, you would lose that, that after-hours recreational space that you have with your other, your existing elementary schools. Again, similar to option eight, you would have a high initial upfront cost with a, a new K three center. So down to the bottom, last few notes on here, summary of financial impact, a $43 million construction cost for that new K three building. That's, that's all that number includes, is just the new K three building. Total annual financing costs of, of 2,750,000. Total conceptual cost savings, similar to option eight, 3,250,000 to 3 and a half million. And then a, a net cost, net savings to the operating budget of 500,000 to 750,000 annually. Then we can, we can, if, if you haven't memorized all those numbers, you can go to the last page. It puts it all in a side-by-side.
Now, the, those renovation cost savings, obviously those vary by plan, right? Depending upon the number of elementary schools that want to keep open.
That's correct.
Would it be, uh, would you be able to just add one more row to the summary sheet to say?
Sure.
You know, what is the renovation cost avoidance? Because from a construction cost, then that would tell us more of the net investment that we're looking at making.
Yes, we can add that. Yeah. A renovation cost avoidance. So that, you know, just one column that says.
That's kind of a mandatory. And if we stay with the status quo, we're going to have to do that. So it'd be good to look at, what's the incremental investment to go with this plan?
That's correct. Mm-hmm. And right. And just to go over the summary sheet, so all four of the elementary school options, the, the last sheet in your packet, all four of the elementaries are listed side-by-side so you can see, you know, how they relate to each other. I will make a note, the difference between option eight and nine in terms of it's like $4 million in initial cost, it's because the addition to add third grade to NAMs, i- it's just difficult to do. It's, it's much easier to build that, much, and easier means less expensive on a new center than it would be trying to build it on NAMs. And you're actually, you have to eliminate some space at NAMs to, to, to build the addition. So you're kind of double dipping and it's less efficient. So just if anybody looks at, well, why was one 43, one was 47? That's the main reason for that. I, I did also want to mention that there's no Plan Con reimbursement factored into any of these costs. So again, I don't know if the school board members are aware or not, but the state did enact a new Plan Con program last year. However, it was unfunded. And then the pand- [laughter] So it only, it only took about five years of, you know, political jostling for them to re, to reinstate the Plan Con program. And then they, but they didn't fund it. And then the pandemic struck. And so it, it is, it's in no man's land. So there, I think there's some intention. I think there's some recognition. I can speak more pre-pandemic because it literally has just been shelved because again, I think everybody's aware you guys more than we are that, because you depend on state funding. But, you know, it, you know, education funding from the state is, is, is a huge issue. This has simply been pushed to the sidelines and will not be brought back until a whole lot of other things get better. Pre-pandemic, the intention was, we're going to enact it and then look to build the political will to begin funding schools because there, there is a philosophical recognition among most state legislature, legislators that.
most state legislators, legislators that, you know, many, many school districts in the state, there's facilities are getting older and they need help, but that's about as far as it goes. So bottom line is, all of these would, none of, there's no reimbursement factored in, and that's the prudent conservative approach at this time. Just wanted to make that clear. Circling back, Mrs. Dobis, did, did going through the options address your question at all?
I don't remember what the question was. I have a new question, though.
Sure, sure.
Last month, I think when we were, one of your, when we, one of the options we were talking about, or you were talking about, was the closing of two elementary schools. And I, I, my original question was the phased-in, how we do the phased-in, and it seems to me that it would be a progressive kind of a phase-in. And that's where you, I think, recommended Memorial and William Penn as the most in need of work in the smallest schools that if we had to do it phased-in or closed. I just wanted to make sure that was my recollection.
That, that is a correct recollection, and we'll just review the, the basic, the basinal con, basic construct of that recommendation. William Penn's your smallest building, so if you were to keep that as one of the three buildings, you're going to have immediate capacity problems. So you'd have to add to William Penn to keep that as one of the three buildings. Because if you go back to the one chart, you'll see it's almost 100 students less than any of your other buildings. So Memorial isn't building okay. You, you did put money into that about 15 or 20 years ago, put a large addition on it. However, the, the big mark against Memorial is, is that the traffic is just terrible. The, the, the bus and vehicular traffic and being right off of the, the main thoroughfare, it's, it's bad. We'll just leave it at that. The other is, it's, it like Ben Franklin is fairly centrally located. So with three schools, our recommendation was keep Abe Lincoln as your kind of northern school, because Bethel Park is a large geographic district. Look at Washington as your southern school, in terms of taking care of most of your southern population, because both of those schools have your, you know, better existing capacity and equity in terms of they, they, they both have gym, you know, nice gymnasiums that are separate from the cafeteria and some other factors. And then Ben Franklin in terms of, so it really would be kind of come down to choose Memorial or Ben Franklin, and Ben Franklin has, it's not great, but it's better traffic-wise than Memorial, and it has better property. You know, it has a better property too. You have better, you know, fields, et cetera. So again, that's just for consideration, it's obviously, you know, board can do whatever you like.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. What was the capacity that you came up with for Neil?
For Neil Armstrong? I don't know.
I couldn't, I couldn't see.
Yeah, we can go, um, yeah, I was going to say, it's, if, if you go to the early existing building capacity.
That's Neil capacity, so you're saying 700, and IMS is 90?
988, that's correct.
Okay, that was, that's funny, because when I went there, Neil Arm, well, that's funny, because when we went here, when I got, before I graduated from here, IMS was holding a whole lot more than that.
That's, that's correct, and there's, and there's several reasons why the capacity has gone down. One is, you've actually taken over classrooms when you went here, and you made them special rooms. So they, they're, they're off the capacity chart.
Okay.
And you've, and special education has grown by leaps and bounds in terms of requirements, and, and they too have taken classrooms off of your capacity.
Okay. And then Neil is the same way, classrooms were taken off of capacity, because Neil Armstrong in 19, if I do my calculations right, 1991, 92 school year was an elementary school.
Yes, yes, and had a whole lot more students than 700.
Correct. So why would we not look at Neil Armstrong as an option as an elementary school for capacity purposes for a K to 2 center or a K to 3 center?
It, you could, but it's really designed to be a middle school. So from that standpoint, it, it doesn't lend itself quite as well. So yes, you could, but then-
You mean, you're looking at, if you're going to 3, you have a North, you have a South, and you have Neil. You could eliminate a whole lot of other things then too, because Neil should be able to hold 5th grade.
You, you, um, the short answer is yes, but it, it, again, in terms of the facilities you were using, it just creates more cost. I mean, in terms of, it's, 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 it, it works well as a two-grade school, and in terms of the options we developed, it worked best to consider building a K3 or a K2 center to meet your educational curriculum needs versus looking to force that back into NAMs. So certainly, it's, again, it certainly could be considered, but it becomes, it, it-
I mean, it was, it was already that way, that's why I'm asking that question. I mean, we did, we as a district did that years ago, because we had a situation with ADA and all of that at the school that was lifted and shifted. So it, it also helps with redistricting at that point in time, too.
Again, it could be done, it just-
Okay, I just wanted, that's why I asked the capacity of NAMs, because it, it was an elementary center right here, you know, an elementary-
Yes.
It looks like it can hold a significant amount of students.
Keep in mind, too, that class sizes were a little bit different back several years ago also.
Yeah, those, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I already asked that question, too.
That's a different question.
It was 500 students in that graduating class the year we, the fourth, the fourth grade year that, yeah, the fourth grade year that moved into that, that had started at the other school.
That's right.
Their graduating class was about 500.
Right, no, that, absolutely. And, and, but again, the, the bottom line is, you had typically much larger classes, you didn't have as much special education classrooms, and you didn't have as many special classrooms. That's kind of the quick answer to, sure.
I'm just speaking now as a superintendent, former superintendent. I, I always like to talk about the elephant in the room, so Joe knows me, I, I don't hold back. The, the greatest challenge and the, and the biggest decision for a board in this case is, and to Mr. Modrick's point earlier, is you all want the best education for these kids, right? But you cannot make that decision in isolation of operational cost. The long-term investment in the buildings, and also that ongoing operational cost. That's why when you look at the scenarios, it's important that you look at the savings. Because if you don't take those savings out, they are cumulative. They repeat themselves year after year after year after year. You know, once they're out, they're out. You know, I, I likened that to, you know, when you're, when you're making the decision, how much money do you want to take from the general, or the fund balance to balance the budget, right? If you're taking a fund balance money to balance the budget, balance something that is in the budget year after year, what happens? You use that money one time, but that cost continues to go into the future. So that's the first piece. The second piece is that you have to have courage to make this decision, because anytime you close a school, it's contentious. There's always going to be someone who's going to say, I don't want you to close my school. I grew up here. It, it's, it's a tough decision. But you are elected to represent all students and all constituents, and so you want to, you want to do what you can, and I'm sure you do, to make, put, put that best educational program forward, but also to be conscious of, of, of the tax dollars and the taxpayers.
No, I think that's a great point, and just, you know, kind of go back how maybe Vince and I were getting into case before about the data, okay? You know, is there a secret sauce for facilities design that ensures success? No, there's not, okay? But it, it makes sense that you, you have to focus on the operational costs so that you can reinvest that into the kids, you know, for resources they need, the teaching staff, things like that, because that's the secret sauce, not the building.
Yeah, in all the research I, excuse me, in all the research I, I talked about on how to rate, because this research is based on the highest achieving students in the world, and that the gap between the lowest achieving children and the highest achieving are ve, is very narrow. And there is nothing in that research about how you configure the grades. I can tell you, like, I mean, you know, you, you can configure, the bottom line is, is if you, if you have great teaching, and you have a curriculum that has standards, and you have assessments that measure that, measure those standards, and you have the materials to support that, you can do that and be successful in any configuration. And, and so I'm kind of glad that you challenged me on it, because that, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
I was wondering, regarding your staff survey and so forth, were there a lot of music teachers at Neil Armstrong versus tech ed teachers or some other discipline? Because there's a whole recommendation to build, I mean, music people, I'm all behind you, I can tell you that.
What you saying now, Mrs. Dobis? That happens, I happen to be, have an arts background.
I was wondering about the survey.
This, this is why, if you remember at the very beginning, I said that the administrative team has to be vigilant in, in saying, are these needs really, are they really needs? Because it's not just the music teachers or the art teachers, every teacher is going to try to get as much as they can. And I don't mean that in a, in a, in a, in sincere way, but you know, you're saying, hey, moving forward, what, what do you need to be successful? So they're going to give that to you. And that's where you have to, you have to sit down and you want to have a discussion, and you want to say, okay, let's talk about how you're going to use that music room. Can we use that room multiple times? How often is it going to be used? Can this door, can we reduce the amount of storage space? So that's a really good point, but that applies to every content area, every subject, you know, across the board. So good, good point.
We will say, though, it, you know, your music program is very good. I was going to ask Mike if you could just share a little bit about where that recommendation came from, and again, your, your NAMs program's the foundation for your IMS that goes into your high school, and so.
Yeah, that, that recommendation had kind of two folds to it. One, it was that, I guess you guys have a great strings teacher at the younger levels, at your K3, your elementary school levels. So there's a lot of kids that are interested in string instruments by the time they get to NAMs. So the space that they were talking about at NAMs of expanding is the space that deals with strings, and they're running out of room for those kids, just because you have such a great teacher getting them in, interested in it at the lower levels. The second part of it was, the space they wanted to expand into was the locker rooms that just aren't being used. So it, it was ripe for a space to, you know, it made a lot of sense to expand that space, because locker rooms are unused space, and, like I said, they just don't get used at the middle school level too much, so.
And we did actually eliminate strings in the third grade like a couple of years ago.
The, what I did want to share, though, is for the board to think about, and we could talk about it tonight if you wish, or we could pick up the conversation next month, but the, the, going back to what Mrs. Dobis shared, you know, how does this get started? You know, in, in three of the four recommended options, the first step would be moving 6th grade to IMS. And again, we shared before, there's just a lot of good sense, educationally, financially, and spatialization-wise, to consider that. And, and then the second one would be, if that step was taken, then could you move 4th grade to NAMs? And again, same, we, we went over some of those reasons, good foundational reason for, educationally, to do it. And in addition, you need more space at all of your existing schools for better educational curriculum program. And taking a grade out would free up classrooms that you could then look to, to use for things like dedicated STEAM program, et cetera. And so gives you that flexibility. So something to think about if there, if there is that consensus.
Do, do any of these programs, I mean, obviously some of those that the district more like it is today won't run into this problem, but as you get into some of those that require, that are proposing more drastic changes there, that, do you have a sense of which ones require more or extended temporary learning space, like trailers and things like that, you know?
Modular buildings.
Modular buildings, yes. He's the pro. But, you know, it, do any of these require that kind of an extended, you know, you know, temporary facility?
We're not sure. We, we, we haven't looked at that.
That's something you decide, once you figure out where you want to be.
Correct. Once the master, when, right, once you pick the direction of the master plan, then that's, again, what we, that's the analysis we do.
Yeah, okay.
Also, by next month, we should have our steering committee for strategic plan formed, and we might even have our facilities subcommittee starting to be formed. So there could very well be more than just the, the school board members coming to the presentation, and we might be sharing, well, we will be sharing your information with this, with the subcommittee, the facility subcommittee, and probably some of the other committees, too. But by that time, Dr. Walsh is going to be here directing us, and you can make sure that he'll be, he'll be able to define that further, explain that further for you when the time comes.
Thank you.
Because we're not in any, we, we are committed to a strategic plan, and so it's going to take time to, and a strategic plan that hopefully will be long-range, ten, you know?
Agreed.
Hopefully 10 years, but again, we won't, many of us won't be here that long, so it'll be short-term and long-term, and we're committed to that, so just so that you know.
No, thank you, that's good information, for sure.
I, I would ask, if there's anyone in the room or online on the WebEx that would like to ask a question as we're getting, getting close to wrapping up the meeting for the evening? Any questions at all?
This is Darren. My, my question was, and my audio was going in and out, and, and some people I couldn't hear because microphones, I could hear the presenters very well. I just want to remind anybody watching from outside that we're not choosing one of these options, we're considering. And so, you know, I, I know a lot of 4th grade parents are going to be worried that, or 3rd grade parents are going to be worried that things might change. Now, I'm, we're just looking at a whole bunch of different options, and that's why we hired this group to give us those options, so.
Very good point there.
Yeah. If you have any concerns, email us, and we go, we can address it in March or through individual emails.
Yeah, I mean, that is a good point, Darren. I mean, this is a, this is a vision, not what, what it will be like next year, okay? I mean, this is, we've said number, number of times, this is a 10-year-plus roadmap.
Yeah, and, and again, to Ms. Turner's point, please check with Mary Beth Gregg about the enrollment numbers, because she sent us a document at the beginning of the year?
No, this last month.
She sends it every month, so she would have the most updated numbers, so you can adjust your-
We will do that, that's fine, because again, there does, there is that fluctuation within the year, right? You have your October 3rd number, and then it changes usually over Christmas break and holiday break.
But she has that here.
Yep, we'll get that from Mary Beth, thank you.
Just, just restating, too, like, in your evaluation of all the buildings, it's your opinion, we have, none of our buildings are in immediate need of attention at this time. These are long-term your plans, there's not, nothing that's so critical that has to be dealt with right away.
Yeah, nothing of a major sort. I mean, we, we have identified, working with Nick and working with the, the buildings, staff, et cetera, certain things that they're concerned about and the like, and they're identified in the facilities assessment, and, and they're there, but, you know, no, nothing that-
Just, just like I said, we're privileged, just so people understand that, again, restating that, this is a process as we go through, because there's a lot of work here, a lot of information that you guys presented, and it will be, we'll, we'll get into, but just so people understand, there's nothing has to be done like pronto, this is for us to review and start making some long-term plans.
Correct.
So thank you, Mr. Hayes, and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
One small, one small question. So IMS doesn't have an elevator?
It, IMS has an elevator, it's not very good.
Oh.
It, it's, 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 it's well past its expected life, and it is a continual headache and problem for the school. problem for the school. And, sorry, and it doesn't go to all levels of the school.
Oh, okay. But Neil Armstrong has one to go to the bottom level, but other than that, we have ramped up wherever it is.
Yeah, right, I was going to say, that, that there's, at IMS, yeah, at IMS and NAMs, there, there's a lot of stair rail lifts, that, you know, in both schools, so that's why the recommendation.
So, anyone else? I do have a couple takeaways, if there's nothing else, just that, that I would like to mention. Things that we need for our next meeting, like the demographic study, I know you're going to have more information on that, you mentioned that earlier. Data to support the educational plan, I would like to see that from HDG, and I'd like to also have some collaboration with our administration on that, too. I think that would be important to, to do that. I, in my mind, there's no one answer to that question, but I think we need to have some support. Mr. Christensen mentioned the cash, cash flow comparison. I know, I know you took notes on that earlier, I think it was him, or was it the renovation cost avoidance? Renovation cost avoidance, and then enrollment numbers with Mary Beth Gregg, that would be great. Anyone have anything else? Did I miss anything that we'd like to see added to the next meeting? Anything from Kevin, from your group, you guys?
No, I, I just want to take a moment to thank the administrators and the board for having essentially a special meeting. Again, it's, there's just a lot of information, and I think it was just more helpful, and certainly helpful for us, and more productive to, and be able to focus on it versus when, again, you have a lot on your plates, and we appreciate that very, very much, but we do appreciate the time tonight, thank you.
You're welcome. And I would just like to say that I believe there was a great deal of information provided to us this evening. A lot of work was put into this study, and I think we are appreciative of that, and look forward to the next steps.